All right, looks like we're live. Welcome, everyone, to the Plastow Planning Board meeting Wednesday, February 15th, 2023. And with that, we can kick off a roll call from Charlie.
Yep, Tom Alberdi.
Here.
Timothy Moore.
Here.
Laurie Millet.
Yeah.
Karen Robertson.
Yeah.
Richard Anthony.
Here.
Bill Coy.
Yeah.
Daryl's excuse. Sarah Terzak.
Getting closer, getting closer.
We're good.
You've got a few weeks to get it right.
I like that little comment you made last week, the last meeting, why I wasn't here.
There you go, yes.
That was good.
That's good, all right. With that, we will move to the minutes. Is there any questions or adjustments? Looks like the attendance count is correct. Any other notes or questions?
Just, just one, I guess, minutes present at the town. Sort of day minimis, we can call it town hall, right?
Oh.
For Richard Anthony.
He's in the country. Elvis is in the building, Richard is in the town.
I left out the hall.
Thank you.
Richard, I have to do something to that.
Yeah, you are gun shy about your attendance.
I have to get it wrong completely.
Exactly.
I mean, it's an important designation, all right. So one adjustment to add hall after Richard's attendance. Any other questions or comments? Someone like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes 500. All right. With that, we'll move to public This is, this public hearing is, I'm in a butter, so not sure, Tim, if is it appropriate to read this and then recuse or recuse immediately?
I can do it either way, I think.
Okay. All right. So this next public hearing, I am in a butter, so I'm going to recuse myself and sit in the audience. If I should choose to make any comments, I will do so officially only as in a butter and not as a member of the Plastow Planning Board.
Okay, so in Tom's recusal, I'll appoint Richard Anthony as a voting member.
Now you're in the big leagues.
Again.
Our public hearing tonight, 2302, is the completeness of an application from 125 Development New Hampshire Corporation that proposes a Phase Two construction of the Southern New Hampshire Industrial Park, including four buildings totaling 192,750 square feet with associated access roads, parking, and utilities. The proposed project does not revise the two lots in the town of Plastow, New Hampshire that are part of the subject parcel. The parcels in Newton, New Hampshire are located on Puzzle Lane. The two Plastow parcels are known as Zero Greenfield Abutting, Tax Map 63 Lot 82, and Zero Ridgewood Rear Road, I'm sorry, Zero Ridgewood Road Rear, Tax Map 71 Lot 19, both in the LDR zoning district. The applicant is the property owner of the Plastow parcels. The applicant is found to be, the application is found to be complete. Planning Board may immediately conduct the public hearing. So with that, first order of business would be to accept the application as complete, which we have a recommendation, I think, from staff to do so. They have submitted all the required materials. And there's a motion at the bottom of the first page of the staff report. Is there someone want to make that motion? The one with the town seal on top of it.
All right, I'll make the motion. I move to accept the application for Phase Two construction for the Southern New Hampshire Industrial Park, including four buildings totaling 192,750 square feet with associated access roads, parking, and utilities in Newton, New Hampshire, known as Tax Map 27 Lot 3. That includes property in the town of Plastow as complete. The Plastow properties include Greenfield Abutting, Tax Map 63 Lot 82, and Ridgewood Rear Road Rear, Tax Map 71 Lot 19.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? All right, I'll make a second so we can get the motion on the table to discuss. Is there any discussion on the motion?
This is just to accept the application is complete, right?
So I don't see anyone with a question or comment on the motion, so I'll call for vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Yep.
Okay, so no opposed and two abstain. That's the vote?
Yep. Richard voted yes.
He voted yes, yes.
Three yes, one no, one abstain.
So having found the application is complete, we move to the public hearing. And general word to?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones Beach Engineers here for the applicant. We're here tonight because the property, which consists of 100, over 150 acres, seven of which is in Plastow, as you indicated, those are Map 63 Lot 82 and Map 71 Lot 19. They consist of about seven acres. The remainder is in Newton. The intent of the project is to construct a four, four commercial buildings totaling 192,750 square feet on Newton, Map 14 Lot 273. Project have access to Route 108, south of Howard Lane and north of the Plastow line. All buildings will be served by on-site wells and septics. No development is proposed in Plastow at this time. We are requesting two waivers with this project. The first one is for relief from the requirement of providing drainage calculations, and the second is for relief of the escrow. We receive staff comments and have no issues with that and take any questions the board has at this time.
Well, when you say nothing is proposed for Plastow yet at this time, well, what would be proposed for Plastow? Because that's in the LDR, the residential, so what would you be putting in there? And those dotted lines that go around, is that going to be some kind of road?
That we, those are phase lines. We don't know what we're doing in Plastow if, I mean, yes, in Plastow, if anything. There is no current proposal to do anything. This is the only proposal in front of you tonight.
So this does not include anything to do with the two for Plastow lots that you listed there?
Absolutely, absolutely. The construction is confined to the, behind Newton or Howard Lane in this area.
Okay, so you would have to come to us?
Oh, absolutely. Any proposed construction in Plastow will require us to be back in front of you.
Okay, so the last time you were in front of us, well, it wasn't you, so.
It may have been. I was here before.
No, it was the first donor.
Well, then it was the property owner that got up and spoke. Okay. So I asked the question about trees being cut out there in the Plastow property, and I was told, oh, absolutely no, there were no trees cut. Well, lo and behold, yeah, there were trees cut.
All right. I don't have any information regarding that.
I know you can't speak for the owner. He's not here tonight. I don't see him. So, but I don't appreciate, you know, him not telling us the truth. And then also, I believe, after he was here, I don't know if it's his construction foreman, he said his name, I might know it. It's like Legborg or?
Yep, I think you have it correct.
Okay, so he got up and spoke at a Newton Board of Selectmen meeting, and he said he had an agreement with Plastow to bring Plastow's municipal water into Newton. And I brought that information back to the board, and the board and the selectmen knew nothing about that. So there's something else that, you know, we're not getting the full story.
There, there was a, a proposal to potentially bring water into this parcel from the Plastow side. I think that proposal has died, but.
Who's the proposal bid to?
They were, they were talking to the Water Department in, in Plastow.
The Water Department or the Board of Selectmen?
I can't recall. I wasn't involved in a lot of those conversations, but I know they were talking to the town regarding that.
Because the, the selectmen are the water commissioners up at the.
Yeah, definitely was my bracket of the selectmen. I can say that.
So that must be the Chair of the Water Committee.
Yeah, and I believe that, that proposal is, is no longer moving forward.
And now, the property owner in Newton, he owned property on Sweet Hill, and he had bought it from another developer, and there were going to be seven detached condos in there. In our last meeting, just coincidental, we reduced the bond because everything was all complete out there enough to reduce the bond. Lo and behold, I read in the paper yesterday, he's now sold that property. He no longer owns that property. So after he brought in, I don't know how many loads of fill into Plastow, and who knows where it came from and what was in it, he's now sold the property. I don't understand what's going on with this developer, but it's not a really good feeling.
Okay. Well, I will, I will relate your concerns to him. And like I said, we currently have no proposal for any construction in Plastow.
Okay. I'm sorry you had to hear all that. You know, you're just.
Sometimes you need to vent, too.
You work for the owners, though.
Any other comments, questions? Anyone in the audience with comment or questions?
Good evening. My name is Tom Alberdi, Two Ridgewood Road. Just wanted to reiterate that I'm representing myself as in a butter in no manner or fashion. As I mentioned, I have already recused myself from this public hearing as a planning board member. With that said, my community has a homeowners association. It's G H E H A, which is Greenfield Hills Estates Homeowners Association. They've asked that I speak on their behalf because of my knowledge of land use and things like that. So a couple areas of concern, and I realize that this property is mostly away from the abutting neighborhood for the homeowners association. However, a few different things, you know, the, the water source for the community is part of the aquifer district, which is identified to be under these proposed buildings and is along with the rest of the property. So that's one of the major concerns for the community is the impact to water. So I know that there was a recommendation or a request to waive some of the drainage studies. I would recommend that we, that the board require all sort of appropriate geologic, hydrogeologic drainage studies to ensure that water source for our drinking water is not impacted. So that's number one. I did have a second concern, which involves a road, and this is mainly more of a conversation likely with the Newton Planning Board, but sort of a road that goes to nowhere. In my experience with Plastow, I understand that the board typically does not like to see a road that extends beyond a project because it's intended for future development, whereas there is actually no understanding what the future development is. So why would you allow for a road that you don't know where it's going, where it's going or what it's servicing? And that was my recommendation to the Newton Planning Board as in a butter, that that road extension really serves no purpose, isn't applicable to this project, but rather a future project. But again, that may be an issue more with the Newton Planning Board. And lastly, our largest concern is where the property abuts Plastow. Again, there, there is a property line that the landowner owns in Plastow. Then there, there is the Plastow Newton Town Line. However, you look at this plan set, you will see that there is a drawing for a 200-foot setback line, which is the setback requirement in Newton. And the setback was calculated on these plan sets based on the property line in Plastow. It's a Newton zoning ordinance. So my recommendation is that the board either reject the application or request that the application, upon conditional approval, reflect that the 200-foot setback line should be initiated at the Newton Plastow line and not the property line with the Greenfield Hill Estates Homeowners Association of Butters. And that's, again, once again, that land in Plastow is zoned LDR, and the zoning is a requirement from residential to commercial setback. And again, it's a Newton zoning and should be reflected upon the border of Newton and Plastow, not with the property lines. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
Sarah, what are your feelings on?
Yeah, a couple things. So one, so staff made a couple of recommendations in regards to the waivers that were requested. So the first one was to waive existing and proposed drainage calculations, and the second was to waive an escrow account that would be used, you know, for another application for a peer review by the town's engineer. Because there is, at this time, as the applicant stated, no development being proposed in Plastow, the town of Plastow, you know, only has jurisdiction over the parcel that exists in Plastow. So for that reason, staff thinks that those waivers are reasonable requests. The item that staff did communicate with the applicant to adjust was actually to provide a note on the plan. There's an existing note on the plan that you have in front of you that staff requested be revised, just to make sure that we cover our bases for if and when there is any future proposed development, not only on the Plastow property, but if there's any future or proposed development that would be to happen in Newton, that the applicant would have to come back to the Plastow Planning Board for review. So even if they propose a, you know, something in the future on the Newton side, not necessarily in Plastow, they would still need to come back to do a similar process like this with the Plastow Planning Board. So on the staff, staff review memo on the third page at the bottom is the note that we've requested that the applicant provide on the cover sheet of the final recorded plans. And the note is to state that any future development or subdivision of any part of the land shown in Plastow, or future development or subdivision of land shown in Newton, shall require compliance with RSA 67453, land affected by municipal boundaries. And within that RSA, it states that the applicant would, would have to come back to the planning board, just like they're doing right now in the town of Plastow as well as Newton. So that's sort of where staff stands. I'm happy to answer any specific questions that the board might have.
Yep. What about the road that we were talking about, which is on the Newton side, correct?
Correct.
Is there any way that, because that is also kind of right on our boundary, right?
So you can see on the screen, I mean, it's, it's not super close. It is, you know, beyond the 200-foot buffer of the property line, which actually extends at that point, you know, beyond the, 200 feet beyond the Plastow Town Line as well. So the, the road as it's being proposed is not within Plastow's jurisdiction.
What about the question of the, the setback being done from the property, or rather from the Newton Plastow line?
So this is based off of the way that Newton's ordinance reads, the 200-foot setback goes from the, the parcel line, not the town boundary. And I believe if we were to enforce the Plastow setback, we would be looking at LDR, so we'd be looking at LDR, right, where the abutting properties are. The current strip in Plastow is also in LDR. So my understanding is that the Plastow setback would actually be a smaller required setback than what Newton is requiring. I believe it would be 50 or 100 feet versus the 200-foot setback. So I, I believe you're actually getting more of a setback with the Newton regulations because it's zoned as industrial, so it's a larger setback. There's also a 50-foot vegetated buffer required within that 200-foot setback that Newton is enforcing.
And what, what about like the hydrological studies because of, you know, Greenfield does have a community? Well, and also, I read through some of the Newton Planning Board minutes, and there was a concern that Gunstock, which is not far from here.
No, it's right, it's right next to it. Gunstock's right next to it, and then you have Patrick Lane's right not far away either.
Community water system going into Gunstock, which I find a little odd considering there's no homes down there for the water system to supply it to. There's homes at the top of the road, but that developer has not been back to this board in many, many years. So I'm a little, I don't understand why Newton is concerned about this water system going into Gunstock when they did not even mention Greenfield.
I, I think requesting from the applicant for, that the board be able to review a hydrogeological study would, is a reasonable request from Plastow. I, Newton is obviously going to get that material, and they're going to enforce, you know, their existing regulations. The applicant also has to go through a handful of state permitting, which is also going to take a look at the aquifer and the water supply. So there are other sort of controls in play that will be taking a look at those studies, but I think the Plastow Planning Board could absolutely request that of the applicant. And I do think that would be a reasonable request to see if the applicant would be amenable to. But there are other controls that are in play that are taking a in-depth look at the hydrogeological study.
Right, because the biggest impact you worry about is Greenfield, right?
Right.
Even drainage and every, and all of that you take into it. If it starts moving everything underneath, it could have a direct impact on that development.
Sure, yep.
And that's, obviously, that's our concern.
Sure.
That's Plastow.
Yes.
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 What, is there any drainage in the Plastow property? Any drainage infrastructure?
No, there's no construction, no, that's going in in Plastow. Obviously, we have drainage control, the drainage associated with our development in Newton, but no drainage that'll be constructed in Plastow. And we are completing a hydrogeological study. The flow, the septic flow from this, which typically relates to the water flow as well, is 2,760 gallons per day. Now that relates to less than five houses. It's a 150-acre parcel. So we, we are certain we're not going to have any issues regarding the hydrogeological study. It was something that the town of Newton is allowed to ask for, so they did. We're completing it. Should be done within the next week. We don't have any problem with the town of Plastow reviewing it, but with, if you put six houses on 150 acres, it's going to work, is basically the bottom line. In addition, the, the drainage that we are designing will, has been reviewed by the town engineer, and it's going to alteration of train. It has gone to alteration of train for review as well.
I was just wondering what the purpose of the waiver was for the drainage.
I was going to ask the same.
There's none there.
Yep. What's the purpose of the waiver?
Because there's no construction going on in Plastow. If you want the drainage report, you can have the drainage report, but it, it seems a little, why would we supply it when you're, we're providing no construction in Plastow? And it's being reviewed by two entities anyway that do have jurisdiction over it. And that's same with the escrow. It was more of a, if you're not going to review the information and that there's no construction going on in the town at this time.
At this time.
Yeah, at this time, that's the words.
That's the key word right there, at this time.
Well, you're right, but at the time.
If we give the waiver now, then.
No, that's not true at all. That's for the application that's in front of you.
Yeah, I can step in just to, to provide clarity. So regardless of any future proposed development that would happen, what we're looking at today, what the Plastow Planning Board and the Newton Planning Board is looking at today, there's zero proposed construction development happening in Plastow. Like I said, with the revised note that staff is recommending that the applicant provide on the recorded final plan set, any additional proposed construction development in Newton or Plastow would have to come back to the Plastow Planning Board is in the same process. So even if Phase Two is, if there is a Phase Two, even if it's 100% contained in Newton, the applicant would still have to come through the public hearing process in Plastow. But as of the proposal that's at play today that we're looking at, there's zero construction or development happening in Plastow.
Is this considered Phase Two?
This is, no. There is, at this time, our understanding is there is no Phase Two.
We are calling this Phase Two. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Of the industrial park, yeah.
So if there were a Phase Three?
Correct.
If there was a Phase Three and it was contained within Plastow, your, this note would compel you to come back to the planning board?
Absolutely. Any, any future construction, proposed construction will have, will, will have to be back here in front of you.
In the Newton side?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
But even if it's done on the Newton side, we have no jurisdiction over there, correct?
It would be a very similar process to what you're looking at today, if there was nothing proposed in Plastow, correct? Yeah. But it would still have a public hearing and come to the board.
As I said, still asked the question why the waiver's needed.
Yeah, why is the waiver needed?
It's all happening in Newton. You know what I'm saying?
That's why staff is recommending that the waiver is appropriate, that there, there's really no, there's really nothing for the Plastow's town engineer to review currently, because there's no development proposed in Plastow, if that makes sense, so.
There's no need for the waiver, right?
It's a requirement of, yeah, it's a requirement of the site plan regulations. So the board waiving it would just be telling the applicant that, you know, yes, you agree, it's not, it's not a necessary component. So it's just waiving the application requirement that's in your site plan regulations. So you would need, as a board, you would need to waive the requirement so that the applicant doesn't have to submit those funds and create the escrow account. And same thing with a drainage and erosion plan, just because there are existing regulations.
Tim, have you been up against something like this before? Where it's kind of like another town has the jurisdiction?
We probably have. I mean, we've had projects that have crossed town lines. But I don't, I don't remember one where a parcel on one town had absolutely no, no development whatsoever. It, the thing that struck me, and we have all kinds of things that we get waivers on when there's actual construction. It just seemed odd that we picked drainage.
We picked those because they're a requirement of your site plan regulations, to provide drainage and drainage calculations, and to provide the escrow. So in this case, we don't believe, nor do staff believe, that the drainage or the escrow is necessary. But we can't just ignore it, because it's part of the requirement of your site plans. So the only way to prevent us from submitting those is to ask for a waiver from them.
I guess maybe I'm not clear, but, you know, what is, what is the relief? I mean, is the relief, like, you submit an information, no information? This is my drainage plan?
Correct. We have, we have a set of drainage counts that has been reviewed by the town engineer in Newton, and is being reviewed by the state of New Hampshire, the Alteration Terrain Permit Department.
So, I mean, does this really constitute a burden? I mean, is it just something you could submit anyways? And it would just be like, there's no.
If we submitted it, then somebody in the town is going to have to review that. Your town engineer should review it. I mean, you could have it for, for, I guess, record's sake, if you wanted. And then that would, then you need an escrow for the town engineer to review it. And we're saying, it's already, there's no construction in Plastow, and it's being reviewed by two engineers. So why burden a third, and the applicant, with the requirement to submit those and provide escrow for it?
And there is, you're saying that also there is a hydrological study that is being done?
There is a hydro geological study that is being done currently.
And will that, and will that encompass the Greenfield lot? Or its considerations?
I, we don't do it, our company personally. So I'm not sure how they, they look at the surrounding areas, I know. But I don't know how far they go.
And that's still being reviewed by Newton at this time?
That hasn't been submitted. We're completing it at their, the company that's doing it is completing it at this time.
So I'd say my opinion right now is we should almost wait till that's done.
Wait till it's done.
Yeah, and continue this.
And see what Newton has to come back and say on that.
I agree.
Because until that, we're just going to grant the waiver that there's no information. It's due not due diligence.
Well, the drainage calculations and the hydro geological report are two different items. We've asked for waiver for the drainage calculations, and the hydro geological report is in a requirement of your site plan regulations.
But if you're doing it already for Newton, I think I'd like to see what their engineer reviews and comes back and says.
I'm just, there are two different items. But if the board is requesting to see the hydro geological report, that's, you're able to do that. That's all, it's just, you know.
Yeah, I think not only do we want to see it, we want some kind of evidence in that report that, and I'm sure the report is looking at Newton properties, and will the Plastow properties have an impact on Newton? What we want to see also is that the Newton development doesn't have an impact on Plastow. Would that stated in there in some fashion, or?
And that's our biggest concern, is that it would affect anyone in that association.
We continue this.
Mr. Vice Chair, I have another question, if that's okay?
Sure.
Once again, Tom Alberti, Abutter, representing GHEHA. I just had a question regarding the, the sort of feedback regarding the property lines, the parcel lines, the setbacks, the zoning applicability there. So if the, Newton's going to look at the town line and designate that the parcel, excuse me, that the property, that their taxable property is at, ends at the property line, is that correct? If that's the case, if the property lines ended exactly at the town line, Plastow's 50-foot setback wouldn't apply to Newton, right? Newton would want to apply its own zoning. So, and vice versa, we wouldn't necessarily apply Newton's. And I guess I'm asking, where's the language or the specific documentation that outlines how to treat this scenario, where there is a sliver of parcel that goes over an actual town line? Whereas, you know, you've got two different sets of zoning variables in play? Because I still contend that the 200-foot setback that Newton's going to enforce should start at what, where they consider the property line to be, or at least what they, where they consider their zoning jurisdiction to be, which is at the town line.
I guess I don't exactly know how to answer that, because I don't know what the Newton setback requirements are.
So the Newton setback requirement for this is 200 feet with a 50-foot buffer. Very likely, the language that appears, and I'd have to look up the RSA specifically, is the RSA that we're referencing in the note, land affected by municipal boundaries. But I'd have to read through it to find exactly if it talks about sort of, you know, how, which zoning ordinance applies to which, and where it ends. Plastow, if Plastow zoning was enforced from a buffer standpoint, it would be, I believe, I have it up, LDR buffer would be a 35-foot setback, well, front setback, which would be, would be, still be less than what Newton's is enforcing. And Plastow would only be able to enforce it from the parcel line, right? Not from the town boundary line. I don't know if that helps adding any clarity.
Yeah, my thought is that the applicability of Plastow zoning would start at the property line between the abutters and that portion that is owned by this applicant. And that furthermore, the jurisdiction then begins with regard to Newton's setback requirements, where there is a property line which begins at the Newton, and in effect, begins at the Newton and Plastow property line, excuse me, town line. That's the buff, that's the differentiator, right? Is the, is the town line, because those are two differently, two very differently zoned parcels anyways. So.
I mean, we have setbacks from wetlands, we have setbacks from structures. Your PRD ordinance has a 50-foot setback, a perimeter setback. That's the only one that I can think of offhand that's related to property lines. The rest are all related to structures or wetlands. And it does, does vary by what it's next to. So a structure in the LDR, I believe, has a different setback if it's next to a commercial property, or industrial property, or another residential property. So I presume that we're looking at a commercial or industrial building in Newton. And if from what I, from what Catherine Moll just talked about tonight, it has a 200-foot setback to another residential property or another residential structure.
This is residential over there.
So.
Yeah, and in this case, the residential property in question is that sliver of land that stops at the abutters, land in Plastow. And I can point it out if it helps.
Yeah, I know, I haven't seen it before. But there is no structure on it, so that's what I'm saying. There's no.
Short, but that's the rough there.
Okay.
The dark line is the Plastow property line between the abutters and Plastow land, this LDR is owned by the applicant. And then this line going straight up is the Newton Plastow property line. So my contention, the 200-foot should start here and go that way, not there. It can go that way, which is how setback lines are drawn. I'd just say that we're not proposing any structures within 200 feet of Plastow at this time. And I don't think that Plastow can dictate the setback in Newton.
Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to do that.
No.
And my only, my only point on that was that the plans as currently shown are not accurate, even though it's nothing proposed in that area. It's still part of the plan, and that's my contention. You know, and this same, same issue will be brought up to Newton, because, because it does apply to that, the plan's effective in Newton as well. Again, nothing's proposed up in that area. But if we don't address it now, it will be assumed that it's okay later. And I just want to, you know, get it changed ahead of time. You know, because the applicant has a history of sort of shooting first and asking questions later. And that's kind of what I just want to avoid.
Just, just a question. Hypothetically speaking, what would it look like to accommodate that scenario that you just heard from Mr. Alberti? I mean, what does that look like? You know, if, if what he was saying was that, you know, something, let's entertain that. What does that look like, just hypothetically?
I could, if I'm interpreting what he's saying, do you have, can you see the screen?
Yes.
He's saying we'd have an offset, a 200-foot offset from this line, which would be the setback. Currently, that does not impact anything. But it's also in the town of Newton. And they dictate their own setbacks, just like the town of Plastow does.
Well, I know. But I'm just, I'm just saying that as the applicant, you know, you've heard what's been said. And whether or not it can be dictated or not, you know, just, you know, in terms of, you know, wanting to address maybe concerns and things like that, does it impact what you, what you're doing? I mean, apart from the fact that you don't have to do it, but.
Currently, we don't have a proposal. So it doesn't impact this. And, but if you were to say, can we make that a condition or something for the future development? I would say no, because I have, you know, we don't have an idea what's going to go in this area currently. And I would never restrict one of my applicant's properties on them.
Is that something you could go to the applicant and perhaps say that, hey, this is a sort of concern that we seem to hear?
Yeah.
What do you think of that? And then?
Bring that, but at the same.
And what if he said, that was like, you know, that's not a problem, that's great. We'll agree to it.
And we would do that.
Okay.
We would definitely bring it to him.
Yeah, so I think that's, you know, I think it's, you know, it's not a rational. So, I mean, it's something that you can bring to your, to your client. And then, you know, we can continue to have discussions, I guess.
I don't think we have a clear, you know, decision or an answer as to what the act, you know, 100% what the actual ruling is on that front. So, and again, I recognize that the plan itself doesn't show any actual construction in that area yet. However, if you look at the plans, it does include the larger parcel, it does include the later phases, and it does include a dotted setback line that they believe is representative of their required setbacks. And again, my contention is that it's inaccurate. I'll also bring this to the Newton Planning Board as a concern as well.
I think we've read this before, I'll read it again one, one more time. They are putting a note, or advising a note on the cover sheet to state, "Any future development or subdivision of any part of the land shown in Plastow, or future development or subdivision of land shown in Newton shall require compliance with RSA 674-53, land affected by municipal boundaries, and shall be included on the final approval and recording of the site plan by the town of Newton, Newton, New Hampshire Planning Board." So I think we're all in favor of that note, anyway. All right, is there anyone else with any, any more questions or comments? So because the hydrogeologic study is, seems to be a crucial part, I'm going to suggest we continue this hearing to the March, third Wednesday in March, or whatever that date is. Probably March 15th. Now, there's 28 days in February, so those dates are the same. So March 15th at 6:30.
Yeah, it is, it's the 15th.
When do we vote? 14th, isn't it?
14th, Tuesday.
15th.
He'll be here.
March 15th.
I'm hoping there's the 14th.
Oh.
All right, anything else?
Nope, not it.
Okay. So hopefully, you get the, that study will be, if not complete, at least well underway.
Yeah, we anticipate receiving it in the next week or so.
Yeah, and I do think we'd want our engineer to review that as well. Or at least the parts that are pertaining to Plastow. I think we want him to review the whole thing through 140 acres in Newton. So that would require a small escrow. Not a lot, but.
So just to dot the i's and cross the t's, then I would suggest that the board vote on the two waivers that were requested. So if the board does want to see all the drainage and have it reviewed, and the hydro geological reviewed.
Yeah, I think we do.
We haven't seen it yet.
We just continued it. Didn't you just continue the meeting?
Yeah.
So we're not going to do any more voting tonight on this, right?
No, but you just.
You didn't, you didn't vote to continue, though?
We don't have to vote. Chairman can continue it or.
But just so it's clear for the applicant, so the board would like to see the hydrogeological study, potentially have that reviewed by the town engineer, which would require a small escrow account, which we'd have, staff would have to work through with the applicant. And then would the board also like to see the drainage and erosion control plan? Okay, just so the applicant is clear on what the board's requesting.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Hey, Tom, so you're back in the cockpit.
What did I miss? All right. So we have a, a gentleman in the audience, we have some other things on the agenda, but if we have a member that would like to speak with us, I certainly want to respect your time. And so, sir, would you like to speak to the board this evening?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to state your name and then your address, and then I'm going to have some open discussion.
Yep.
And then I'll, you'll have the, all of our ears after I just make some, you know, some commentary.
Okay. So my name is Daniel Kane. I live at 64 Main Street in Plastow, and I'm the owner of Sweet Hill Farm at 82 Newton Road.
Great, okay, thank you. Daniel had reached out to staff, it's not on the agenda as it was accepted. Normally, we do the agenda the Thursday prior to meetings. We've got two meetings scheduled on a regular basis during the month. We meet the RSA standards from the state in terms of how many meetings we hold. The first meeting is typically a workshop meeting where we discuss everything from initiatives and other sort of non-application discussions that the planning board has jurisdiction over. And then the second meeting is an application hearing. We will occasionally cancel some meetings, or especially if there's no applications, then we typically look at mid-July, where it's peak holiday season, and then right ahead of the Christmas and New Year timeframe, where we're looking to see if we have applications. If we don't, we usually don't have the attendance there. A couple of things, so we have a, I love transparency, right, with government. I love that the community wants to engage us, and we can engage back. We're here to serve. As far as land use, there's really four segments to it, if I think about it, right? There's the planning board, and our jurisdiction is over application hearings. Do they meet all the state zoning, town and state zoning requirements, RSAs, and so on? As it's submitted, we receive those applications, and then we have hearings, and then approve or not. And tonight, we had, the board heard an application. As far as the ZBA goes, they're more of a quasi-judicial board that acts with some jurisdiction by creating a judgment upon whether or not something is applicable. It may be a request to do something that's not allowed, or it may be, hey, we're really not sure if this is allowed, will you come in front of us? And they hear those things. We have code enforcement that operates, those two boards are completely elected officials, or some are assigned per their crossover, like the ex officio from the Board of Selectmen. And then we have code enforcement responsible for, Tim, if you have anything to add, I mean, my thought on that is everything after the fact, right? Or making sure that land use is appropriate and continues to be appropriate. And then I think they also handle permitting and things like that. That's an assigned position within the town. And then we have planning board, excuse me, we have planning staff that supports ZBA, planning board, and whatnot. And those are positions, or in this case, RPC member, that supports all the land use activities within the town. As far as public hearings, right, we kind of just crossed over from the zoning amendment season, as I would call it. It's a long evening where we consider zoning amendments. The interesting thing about zoning amendments is like anything else, right? When we establish laws or policies, typically, they're born of some sort of situation where you say, hey, we need to address this issue, because in some instance, something came up, and it showed us that we have, we don't have the proper language that can answer the question, yes or no, or this way or that way. And typically, the board will say, hey, we didn't really consider this, or the laws change within the state, or some new requirement comes up through the RSAs, and we say, hey, we're not meeting that standard, so we propose zoning amendments. So the zoning amendments, and please jump in, Tim, if you, and anybody else on the board who has a timeframe, right? We have two posted public hearings, that's to favor the public, so that we can present those zoning hearings, zoning amendments in front of the public, where we read them twice, and then the board votes. After we have discussion on them, we vote whether or not we recommend it, and then it goes to town vote. So we went through that process, we didn't have any feedback from the town members, and some of the orinacles had some discussions, some didn't. And so, within that framework, when the public hearing is completed, we're now at a point where we've made our vote, okay? And we really can't have specific conversations about those things, because it would have had to have happened within the public hearings. So I'm just cautioning the board, I'm not even cautioning, I'm just saying, hey, this is our role, right, as elected members? When the public hearing happens, we can have discussion after it's happening, we can talk about general conversations, but if we revisit an application, if we revisit a zoning amendment, we're effectively reopening a public hearing without noticing it. So we're not doing it properly, and that's the effect of government, and I don't like it either. But I want to engage the public, we're here for you guys. So I just want to state that. It's just like, the other thing is, if I was to say that I grew up, and I don't know, someone threw a frisbee, hit me in the head, and I hate frisbees, and I think they're the most evil thing in the world, and then I heard, and I said in meetings, I don't ever want to see a frisbee store in this town, and then next week, there's an application for a frisbee store, I would effectively need to recuse myself, because I've made a prejudgment upon that type of a business or that store. And so we've always got to be cognizant of talking about specific businesses and activities, so that we don't get into a situation where we have to recuse ourselves in the future. But with that said, is there anything else to cover, Sarah or Tim, that, you know, is pertinent to a public discussion? So that we have a good discussion, nothing is seen as being obstructionist, but that sort of I lay the ground rules, or the understanding of our governmental role within the town, about how we have to proceed. So again, we can talk in general terms, we can't talk about specific zoning amendments, because we did already have our public hearings. But I think we can have a general discussion about land use. Certainly want to hear everything you want to say, and you can choose or to not, you know, share any information about your property, that would be great. Sarah, is there anything else I missed that we need to cover?
No, I think that was very well said. The same thing about, you know, the frisbee store, I would just say, it goes the same way for specific properties in town. So just being aware of, you know, not putting the board in a situation where, in the future, you might have already expressed a bias, or something of that nature. But I think, great points.
Yeah, and everything, I think that this board, and I'm truly confident, you know, I think we, we're a great board. I think we care about the people, we care about the town, and we want to do everything on the up and up. Now, of course, policies and procedures and RSAs and ordinances sometimes mean we have to do it this way or that way, but we have the general best interests of the town, the businesses, and the residents in this community. And I think if anybody looked at the minutes, you generally hear us talking favorably about the town, and, you know, I get it, people reach out and say things on Facebook and say, why is this kind of store going in? Why is that kind of store going in? I get that most people don't understand how land use works. I didn't until I got involved. Again, I've said it before, it's not American Idol, where we say, I like that business, and I don't like that one, and I'm going to sort of treat one differently. Everything we do is with the general idea that we're going to be fair to the whole community, regardless of property, business, individual, zoning parcels, anything like that, you know, so I just want to state that. Tim, is there anything else you want to share?
No, I think you summarized it pretty well.
Okay, so with that in mind, I'm going to leave the floor open to you, and thank you for coming in, we don't often get visitors, so thanks.
No, something you don't know about me, but I've been in that chair, as a chair of the planning board. I've been in the chair on a ZBA, as the chair of the ZBA. So I come here with some knowledge and appreciation. And I think you are a good board, you know? I've said that, and I mean it. And I think you know what you're doing, you know? My issue, and I'm not here to, I'm not going to talk about my property, there'll be time when I come before you to talk about that property, that's not now.
Great, and could I just, I just want to throw one more thing in there, just for everybody's sake, right? Everybody's, as I would, I'd like to refrain from using individual names, because then that, you know, gets us into a different arena. I'm not saying that anybody was going to, but I'm looking at you, Karen, no, I'm just kidding. Oh, I just said her name. I'm cautioning.
I was going to say, did I say something?
I'm cautioning.
I'm Irish, I can say anything at any time.
I'm cautioning everybody in the room. I think it's just, again, this is government, right? It's kind of a pain in the butt, but, you know.
And listen, a fool can ask more questions than a wise person can answer, you know? So I'm not, I'm not really here to pose a lot of questions. And I get it about, you know, the public hearing being over for zoning amendments. I'm not so sure the notice and the minutes and everything was as broad and as timely as they could otherwise been. And admittedly, you know, I was, before the ZBA, I was distracted at that very time. But what do you do when you have something that you might not have thought all the way through? As a hypothetical, what do you do with an amendment that kind of looks, might look out of place upon a second look? Because I think that's what you have here, without naming the amendment. What do you do? You just, you just, do you just go forward with it?
Well, if it's on the ballot.
Yeah, it's on the ballot.
I get it.
You can change that.
And it gets voted, voted in, you know, the amendment passes. And there are points in that amendment that, looking back and seeing what they are, you might want to make adjustments, which you can do the following year. And we, I mean, there are some ordinances, like our sign ordinance, if we haven't modified our sign ordinance 15 times, you know, we haven't done it once. And that's because different things come up from time, you know, sometimes there's oversight, sometimes there's, when these wave runner signs came out, I mean, they didn't mention those specifically the first time, so, you know, you try to make the ordinances fair for both the town and the applicants. If, of course, if the warrant fails, then it doesn't take effect, and you're at the same point, you can make revisions the following year. But there's no, there's no process to go back and make revisions per se to that ordinance, unless it's before the zoning deadlines, of course, then you.
I suspected it's much, but I just.
That's correct.
And we have changed our minds, and the following year, we changed it. I'll give you an example, and you, how long have you been in town?
22 years.
Yeah, so you must have voted on it, because it was probably, I don't know, three, four years ago, the beginning of Main Street. It was, we wrote an amendment to change at the beginning up to a certain point.
Yes.
To C1.
Yep.
And I was against it, and it did pass, because the majority, the recommendation was yes. Well, the following year, I made sure that that went back on, and we changed it back to C2. So that's why the beginning of Main Street is still sitting the way it is. But we have, you know, discussed it after the fact, and, you know, maybe we didn't think it out well enough, and we did, the next year, we did change that. So that has happened to us.
Yeah, and again, I think that, you know, we react to things, and it's, part of that's human nature, but it's part of the way we, there's so much going on with the zoning and keeping up, that, you know, there's some proposals that are in this zoning that are reactive to sort of some of the things that transpired this year. Completely independent of anybody in this, you know, an application that was frankly was approved, and then we said, oh, well, you know, how do we feel about that, and what may happen after the fact? And so we changed some language in one of our zoning amendments. And so again, it's a reactive situation. I think that we, when we look at all the zoning amendments, and there's a lot, right? And there was a lot of reading that was done that evening. And there's a lot more than I think we want to put out there, but I trust that the staff is going to provide us with the proper information. We'll change some ways that we go about this, that we understand why zoning amendments come before us and what we're looking at. But, yeah, again, we're not looking to signal, single out any individual business parcel of land or anything like that. But there'll be discussion, you know, we'll come out of this vote, and right away, we start talking about, well, what do we want to try to accomplish this year? Did we miss something? Should we have considered that? So it'll be up for discussion. Yes, Karen?
I think the big thing was, too, when we'd go over this, we start back in October, November, and into December. So when we come to a certain number, and we did really try to keep it down to like 12 or 13, which was a lot better than last year. But what the thing was, is that sometimes some just get thrown at you, you know, at the last minute. So that's where I think there should be a time limit, maybe. You know, if you're going to put something in there, please put it in with the rest of them, you know? Don't just throw it in the last minute. And I think that was a big problem. It really was. I don't think we really read through them, that, at least, I will take the blame for that. I didn't really read them through, I didn't ask questions like, why have we all of a sudden got this? You know? I didn't, I just said, pass it, you know? So I think how we bring, and how many should be done before the last minute in December. That's all I'm suggesting, that I think was part of our problem.
And I think, you know, we had some discussion about the process. Again, I looked at, I'm not so sure that, you know, the zoning amendments will have any unintended consequences, some of it, we won't know until, up until something comes up, and we say, oh, jeez, we didn't really, you know? And we've talked about other amendments, well, you know, what do we do in industrial? What if we do this? Oh, well, that will, that will keep that away, but what if it was this type of business? You know, jeez, we would love to have that type of business. Well, would that have the unintended consequence? It's hard, it's hard to really foresee any, you know, possible areas where it would have a negative impact to, you know, a positive applicant, or business, or landowner. Richard, do you have a thought? Your brain, I can see his turn.
I agree with what's being said here, that, you know, the process, you know, has, there's a reactive element to it. And there's also a sense that you make a decision, and then maybe you want to go back and revise it, because it doesn't seem like it was correct in retrospect. But I think, predicated on, that's predicated on the idea that that's the normal ebb and flow of things. And I think it's important that we know the narrative, or the pedigree of when an amendment comes before us. All right, so I guess if somebody says that, or presents something as being housekeeping, in my mind, something that's housekeeping is going to be something along the lines of Scribner's errors, tightening up verbiage that, you know, it's just so that it's a little clearer, but it's not affecting anything materially. All right, so if something is presented to us as being housekeeping, I would take it personally if it turned out not to be housekeeping, and rather had something that had something of material import. And that, I would say that's not, I don't think I'd want to, I'd want to know the history of when that thing was conceived, when it came. the history of when that thing was conceived, when it came through, where it came from. Right? Because then that becomes material in any type of consideration of what's in front of us. I mean, if something's a Scribner error, I'm not going to parse that. It's going to be just, okay, you want to clean up some language, you want to strike this, you want to strike that. If it's material, then the full context of how that amendment was generated needs to be presented.
And that's really on us too, right? If we don't have the information, that comes to us. We don't feel we had enough information to vote on something, then we shouldn't vote on it. And if we're not prepared to vote for on it, then we shouldn't.
Okay, but I.
That falls on our shoulders.
I'm saying something a little more specific. I mean, it's one thing to just sort of, oh, let's vote, let's vote, let's vote, all right. You know, something along the lines of wetland language where you're given sort of boilerplate, this is boilerplate language that we're adopting. It's hand railing, let's say the state verbiage and we're, okay, I mean, we're really not going to parse that. All right, but I would say then that, I mean, any amendment that comes before me, or if I were to vote on it, I'm going to say that I need to know, I guess I have to read it, that I need to know the context and pedigree of this. And if that's not provided, you know, then I'm going to assume that there's something untoward.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. And I think that, you know, we, we had some discussion about this, right? Almost like our internal voters guide and you made the word, I think the operative word there is context. So again, we're going to have next year's amendments and 90% of them are going to be, the genesis is going to have been some situation that showed that our zoning was deficient in some capacity. Didn't answer the question that needed to be answered. And we'll have to sort of address it because it got, you know, it got exposed during that process. Again, so if we get the context and we'll ask this of staff and any, anybody, whether RPC member, hey, next time we come up to our zoning amendment season, please give us context on where the.
Do it time-wise.
Yeah, and it's good because that's good. We'll say, oh geez, because now we start thinking about how it came up, how it might apply to other businesses that might come in or other property owners. And then we'll say, you know, does this have unintended consequences? Yes or no? And so again, I would love to have a conversation about your property. You know, the question is, is if there's ever a future application, then, then, you know, we kind of pre-discussed and. But I think if you've read the minutes, we've all talked about your property and all basically said that at some point in time, we've been a customer, that we love the property in terms of kind of what you've done. So we appreciate that for sure. I mean, that's.
I, I, there's, there's no way I can do ultimately my vision for that property without coming before the planning board. There's just no way, you know?
Can I ask you a question without getting to specifics? Do you feel that we would be a hindrance to what you want to do?
No, no, it's just, I want to, it's my private property.
Yeah.
I want to do it when I'm ready. I don't think that's a big ask.
Yeah.
You know, I really don't.
I don't understand enough about the RSAs and I've been meaning to take some time to read up on it just because I like this kind of stuff, right? Understanding where zoning changes between, you know, agricultural use and, and commercial use. And so I think that's sort of my personal to do to really understand that. And then, you know, I'll say this though, for all the applications that have come in front of us, everybody's, you know, we're not here to stop people from doing things. Now, again, there may have been a few businesses, excuse me, a few things that came in front of us that we maybe said, well, is the community gonna love this?
I've watched a lot of meetings.
Is the community gonna love this? No, but you know, we followed, that's what we ended the day, we're following the laws and then zoning and the ordinances and all that good stuff. So yeah, we, I don't think we've rejected any applications that I know of in the couple of years that I've been doing this.
And I will tell you, I have no fear coming before, like I said, I've sat and I know what this is, I know what the drill is here. It's just, I'm not ready. There are, it's a complicated property, you know? I've got 22 and a half acres sitting in current use. So the land I can actually use to do what I want, you know, is a 25, you know, point six acre property. Everything I think of there, I have to think of, you know? So it's, it's, it's the time I need to do what I need to do and to put forth something that makes, that I find that makes sense. Because at the end of the day, you guys are important for the, for the approval, but you're not as important as to how I think about that property. And I don't, that's not arrogance. That's just, no different than your property is your property.
Sure.
You know?
Absolutely. The, you know, the, the application process, and I mean, you know this, especially if you've been involved in land use, really just to protect the landowner in the first place, plus the abutters and everybody else. And so, you know, it doesn't have the proper drainage like in previous applications that have been in front of us. The amount of parking spaces is the septic system, you know, up to par. And again, it's about public safety. So I think if we, if you get to a point where the zoning requires an application, we're here for you, we're here to support you, we'd love to talk to you ahead of time.
And I will come in ahead of time, you know, that's for sure. I mean, before I bought the farm, I hired Charlie Zilch. So, you know, I've been here in this town a long time, you know? And I don't even want to tell you how many versions of a plan we have.
Sure.
You know, so my fear with this zoning ordinance, kind of that's, you know, he who shall not be named, so to speak, is I don't want to turn around and it passes because they all pass. All right, I looked at everything going back to 2018. It's, it's a batting average of 100%. The only thing that failed, the only zoning amendment failed was in 2018, was a citizen's petition, you know? So the likelihood of this passing is extremely high. I'm going to voice some opinions publicly about what I think, whether, I will never be disrespectful. That's just not my style. I'm generally polite. But I don't want this all of a sudden to be on the books. And given some of the struggles I've had over the last year, this turns around and gets pointed right at me. That's what I don't want. And that's my fear. So there's nothing you can do about it now. I don't expect you to do anything about it now, but I want you to hear what my fear is.
Sure, yeah. The, you know, it's tough. Look, we're all elected members here. The pay stinks. I mean, it really stinks, right? The paycheck never comes, so. So that's why it stinks. So the interesting thing is, Laurie and I were talking about this earlier, is, you know, when we recognize people who are out and about, because at the end of the day, out of the 8,000 some odd citizens or however many is in town, it's probably the same 40 that, 30 or 40 that actually do pretty much everything, T-ball, baseball, planning board. You know, we're all the same volunteers. So we care about the community. And I understand, the interesting thing about the communication on social media is, you know, people get out torches and pitchforks pretty quickly and, you know, start chasing, you know, but don't always know the full story. I just, you know, I want you to know that we had no ill intent on any of the zoning amendments that we passed.
I didn't think so, just so you know.
We, we used our best judgment. We tried to consider everything. Doesn't mean we did, but we tried to consider everything. We didn't zero out anybody or at least this, you know, as far as like, there was no specific direction or trying to impede any sort of good progress in town. And frankly, I'm not so sure that any of the amendments will have a negative impact on, on any future construction, except for somebody who might want to put a big distribution center and, you know, well, I guess I can't talk about that specifically either, but. So whether they pass or not, I'm not sure, you know. Again, we'll come together after the town vote and we usually do, we have a sort of a postmortem. How did the vote go? What was the general consensus? And we'll start talking from day one about what we want to put forth in 2024.
Okay, fair enough.
Yes, Karen?
I do want to say, you know, because this has happened to a petition, when I had a petition a long, long, long time ago. The thing is that there's nothing wrong with, everybody gets, can get one of those voting guides, you know? So they know what they're going to be voting on. And there's nothing to say that I personally or anybody can talk to different people and explain maybe something about one that bothers them. There's no law against that. So when you say somebody goes in there to vote for everything, if there might be an amendment there that I feel like I want to speak about to other people that ask me about it, then I have the right to say what I feel, right?
Absolutely. It's just when the boards together, having a public.
You can get it that way too.
Yeah, no, this is, I mean, in these public hearing settings, right, there's certain restrictions we have to.
Right, we have to be careful in the hearings.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, people come to me a lot of times, say, what's going on here? What's going on there? What's the deal? What's the deal with that? You know, it's, I feel fortunate that I have a small portion of understanding and education on how land use works. And so I try to impart some of that wisdom, but. Yeah, is there anything else anybody wants to share? I mean, again.
Just, I mean, again, you know, I mean, the way we've discussed things is then, I mean, if there was, you know, a question about how something came to be, all right, we're saying now that we, you know, to speak about, to speak about it or even to ask questions about it is to, in essence, we're opening a public hearing on it. I mean, is that what we're saying? I mean, if I were to say like, you know, hey, amendment X, where did this come from? You know, what's the story behind it, you know? Who, who walked in and said maybe, you know, it'd be great if we tightened up X, Y, and Z. All right, so, I mean, so that information is never, ever to be, it's never to be disclosed. Is that what we're saying?
When there's a, when there's a quorum of the planning board, that is correct. It should not be discussed based off.
Even after, even after we vote in March?
Say if, what's the, what do we have here? Say like for selectmen, if three of us are together, we can't talk about town business.
At Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, no, I'm saying that even after, after we vote.
After the election.
We can't, the board can't get information about it?
After the election, it can be discussed as a board. And if, if just by making sure that we're following the proper noticing and rules and procedures.
So it isn't something that's forever locked away?
Election happens, if there's a quorum, it can be discussed.
But think about it this way, the only thing I'll say is that it sounds, it sounds like we're being so obstructionist right now, right? Not transparent. The reality is, this is the same thing that would protect townspeople from us going, oh geez, can you believe that guy came in and he's such a jerk and I hate frisbees and so on and so on, you know, like, there's these same laws that are, you know, intended to protect how we communicate, what our communication is.
But okay, let's, let's use your, we'll run up your analogy a little bit here. You know, let's say that, that, you know, we subsequently came up with an amendment where we just, you know, really bashed on the frisbee people, okay? And then, you know, and then March comes, you know, after we've said that there are all sorts of unintended things that happen and like such that we can always go back and revisit. But then it's voted on and it passes and then it, and then let's say we find that, oh wait, it wasn't something that was unintended, but rather it was something that was specifically crafted so as to be able to affect an outcome after the, after it's voted on. All right, I, you know, I want to know that and, you know, if it's, and I'd want to know the narrative behind it. So it isn't something that should just be pushed away and then never, not talked about. If it's some, if it is passed and then it becomes apparent that, wow, this, this just didn't come out of nowhere, all right?
And then I think we bring it back up again, right? And then we change it.
Yeah, but again.
Fall when you have to rectify, it's like everything else, every day's a learning experience.
But it's more specific to what I'm saying. It's not rather like, I'm not saying that, oh, we're waiting until November to remedy it of this year. But rather, if it becomes apparent that it is something that has been not accidental or unintended, I, I think it's, it's, in the interest of transparency, I'd want to know that narrative. And I'm just putting it out there that if it, if something's unintended, that's fine. We adjust and remedy it when, in the next go around. But if it becomes apparent that it wasn't unintended and has some other non-housekeeping characteristics to it, I've, I would like to know, know that. And I think everyone else would like to know that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's probably, that's a different conversation, I think. At the end of the day, you know, we know that the amendments, the majority of them came about by identifying some level of a deficiency within the current zoning or language and zoning or that the requirement to be updated. But I understand, I mean, as a board member, I'm going to require that we're all on the same page and that includes staff and hopefully zoning, ZBA and code enforcement, that everything we do is on the up and up. It's not nefarious, it's not targeting, it's, it's for the greater good of the community and.
But. We do have our lawyer review all of our amendments well before deliberative session to make sure we don't do something that's, we might think is fine, but doesn't meet some of the RSAs. So there is that checkpoint.
But zoning isn't discussed and zoning amendments aren't discussed.
Not at deliberative, they're not.
Right.
Not, well, no. So I guess what I was trying to say, by the time we have our zoning public hearing, the amendments have already been reviewed by our lawyer. We should have stated it that way.
Yeah, that's a good point. It was, go ahead, Sarah. It's members of staff, members of legal, then it comes to the board and then we discuss or not and.
And to Tim's point, you know, the attorney, legal does review zoning ordinances, proposed amendments. If there were a situation where the town adopted something that was going directly against state law or RSA, the RSA would supersede that. So if there was an unintended ordinance that was adopted that doesn't fit with RSA, state law would supersede what the town could enforce. So I think that's an important note as well.
That's, that's a good note. Thank you, Sarah, for adding that.
Yeah, in this, in this case, I think the amendment, I followed the trail of the amendment. I think it was better before it got to the lawyer than, than after.
I'm lacking it.
Yep.
Definitely can.
Yeah, I mean.
And I think you have a good attorney, so I'm not, you know, so it has nothing to do with, I, I think it, it looked better before than it did after.
And I would say that for all of our amendments, probably started off one, one iteration and ended up, you know, maybe slightly different.
Pass the word around.
And I want to, I want to caution us, you know, not to talk about a specific amendment tonight, but, you know, just to make the note that as the board knows, as, you know, citizens who are following the process know, it's a long process, right? And there are a lot of iterations and language does get changed along the way. So, you know, it does take, especially when you have such a sheer high volume of amendments that we were working through and particularly this year, you know, things can get lost in translation, right? And I think, you know, the, the best intent is going to be to have sort of that, the post-election conversation and workshop meeting where we as a board sit down and say, okay, you know, where are we at now? What are things that we need to really prioritize for next year to be making sure that we don't have any unintended consequences that, that could have come about of any of those zoning amendments? And sometimes you don't realize unintended consequences until halfway through the year. And that's when, you know, it'll get flagged and put on staff's list to start talking about in October as well.
Yeah, like I said, we appreciate you coming tonight. You definitely hear what your staff has received your communication to us. We haven't had any prior dealings until this evening. So certainly we welcome you. If there is ever any, any further business with the board, I think it's everybody's desire to feature 100% fairly, 100% supportive. And anything we can do to help, you know, as you thrive as a business and in the community, you know, we want to be able to do that as well. And certainly the last thing we want to do is ever present hardships or, you know, anything that would be seen as negative, so.
No, I appreciate that. And on the flip side, I'll be before you. Just where I gotta have that plan.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, so we have almost 10 o'clock.
Good.
So that's wrapped up, and then we'll move to old business. So amidst everything else this evening, we have some really great news. So Sarah, you want to give us an update on before?
Sure. So we did receive the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant funding. We received the, I think they, an email went out to the board, but we did receive the award letter. So the board does need to make a motion to recommend accepting the grant to the Board of Selectmen. So that's what you have in your packet this evening. But it is for the full $50,000 Housing Opportunity Planning Grant that you guys have seen the scope for a couple of times. And then once the Board of Selectmen accepts the grant funding, then the work will get started. And as we have discussed previously, I think sort of the first thing you guys will see is the, the startings of putting together that build-out analysis in town as well as some preliminary housing chapter master plan work. So those will be sort of the first steps.
When you said it wasn't going to take long for the grant to come to, I didn't, I didn't believe you. I've never seen anything this quick.
I know.
It's usually the other way around. They want their money really quick. They're not usually that quick about giving you money back. Oh, that's awesome, you know, and huge credit to Sarah and any staff that was involved.
Oh, absolutely.
We, we wouldn't have done this without you. This wouldn't have happened under prior leadership.
Started with that stupid page of a survey.
I think it's going to be great to just have this as a, as a resource to get the work started for, for Plastow, and I think it's a really awesome opportunity, yeah.
It's noted that per RSA 3195-B, all gifts, grants, or donations received that were unanticipated, which was not considered part of this year's budget, have to be accepted by the Board of Selectmen at a public hearing before the funds can be expended. So we are going to make a motion that is a recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to hold a public hearing and accept the grant. Is there any other discussion before we get to that motion about the grant? Any questions for Sarah regarding the grant? I guess we, we will have to talk about next steps once, assuming that the funds are approved to be accepted, how to actually use them appropriately and what that looks like. But for now, any other questions? Someone want to make a motion?
I move to recommend the Board of Selectmen that they hold a public hearing at their earliest convenience and accept the $50,000 Housing Opportunity Planning Grant awarded to the planning board. The grant award is provided by Invest New Hampshire Municipal Planning and Zoning Grant Program, funded by the New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs as part of the $100 million Invest New Hampshire Initiative with ARPA State Fiscal Recovery Funds.
Go a second?
I'll second it.
Sarah seconds? Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Obstained.
Motion passes 401 with an abstention by the ex-officio, Mr. Coy.
I would imagine now this will be on the next meeting, which is the 27th.
Anticipated to be on the next meeting, but not confirmed just yet. Great. All right.
I just have something on this. Was this the report that Sarah and you were talking about? The, what was it, the Plasto implementation, you know, of the plan? Was that the one?
That's what I want you guys to review for the March workshop.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's the same thing, though, that is probably here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
All right, that in mind, that brings us to new business. Is there any new business to discuss?
I have an item of new business. So I do have some bittersweet news for the board. I have actually recently accepted a new job and will be leaving my time at the RPC.
All those opposed?
Yeah, a bone on that.
I always get really attached to, to the planning boards I work with, so it really, truly is bittersweet for me. I, I've really enjoyed working with you all. I've really enjoyed working with town staff. And you guys will absolutely still be receiving RPC staff support. It sounds like Jen Rowden, who is one of our senior planners, who has many more years of experience than I do, will be attending Plastow Planning Board meetings with you guys for the foreseeable future. She's awesome. I know absolutely I'm leaving you guys in great hands. I know she's worked with Plastow Town Staff before as well, so I think there's already a great relationship there. She will be guiding, I'm leaving Jen with sort of the next steps for the economic development work, so the, the master plan review. And she also has been really involved with the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant applications as well. She submitted a few for a couple of other towns. They were very similar to what we're hoping to do here in Plastow. And her and I have been sort of in communication about, you know, what's going on in town for the last couple of weeks, so I'm hoping she's up to speed and you guys will be able to sort of hit the ground running and not, you know, you were going to lose me for a little bit at some point, you're just losing me a little bit earlier. But I think the transition should be pretty smooth for you guys, and I wish you all the best. Like I said, yeah, it's really, truly bittersweet for me.
Is this, is this our last official meeting?
This is the last of my.
I mean, I finally got.
I know.
Go on, I'm give up.
We do require a two-week notice.
My fault, great.
Wish you all the best.
Yeah.
We do. Oh, my gosh, we do.
Little opportunity, but.
Yes.
There's no addition coming, so.
I'll see if I can get a, a little baby picture for you guys when, when he arrives, too.
We have to have that.
Do you want to live off the different personalities?
Oh, I will. Especially you, Bill.
Exactly.
But that's it, yeah, that's all we have.
So, yeah, so sometimes, you know, when, when crap happens, right? Good things come about and you don't anticipate it. So, you know, it was probably about a year, a year ago that the board had a sort of a troublesome situation and.
Just kept saying, we need somebody, we need somebody.
Did you come in town?
I think it was over, it was over the summer, yeah, yeah.
We, we, we said, well, we, you know, so we kind of were in an odd situation. We, we asked to have RPC come in and just to chat with us, and then next thing you know, the wheels were set in motion. You've been great. I think that we accomplished more, and this has nothing to do with us individually, but, you know, it takes a team and it takes all of us volunteers beyond our daily roles, our lives, to also have support. We know Dee is overwhelmed with a thousand things and, you know, so it was great to have good direction. And I think we did some positive things, so thank you so much. Leave us in a better place than when you came.
Good, yeah, and I think that will continue, definitely, yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
I know Jen pretty well. In fact, I remember when, well, I'll say our first day, but probably so, when she showed up at RPC, and she's done, she's done a great job for the commission. And I'm sure she'll do a great job for us as circuit rider.
Absolutely.
Go off the Tom Brady model, I mean, you know.
I know.
Nothing's certain until it's certain, right? True, true.
Trust me, my director is, he's still, still telling me that. He's like, you know, we need a three, three-month grace period.
Cooling off period. Yeah. Hasty decisions. Whenever I work with someone who I really respect, like, they tell me they're leaving or taking a new job, I'm like, ah, son of a gun, but I'm so happy for you, and that's kind of the same thing, right?
You're disappointed for you, happy for them.
Yes.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Awesome. Well, you got a lot of good things happening for you where we support you, so, awesome.
They're very lucky, the new job.
Who else would start a new job at eight months pregnant?
Yeah.
Hannah, I'll see you in three months.
Yeah.
I start next week, so it's, it's fun.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, wow.
Well, like she said, the, the, the good thing is, is if we just had a sort of random town planner and they were gone all of a sudden, which we were in that situation. We had no level of continuity necessarily. But, you know, I think engaging the RPC, these scenarios are probably going to come up, and it's, it's good to know. Yeah, it's good to know that there's going to be a good handoff.
Yes, absolutely.
We did renew a new contract, right?
Yes.
It's a good question.
No, I, that'll never happen again. That'll never happen again.
RPC funds were all approved, right?
No, no, I don't mean that part of it. I mean.
Plus the.
The circuit rider.
Circuit rider, yeah.
Yeah, you did. Yep, yep.
The, I guess, that's a good question. Do you, did you sort of put a pro forma together about how many hours you were committing to us? And did it vary depending on application?
So we, we do have all of that, like, history. And I, you, really, that's a question for my director and for town manager. They're the ones who sort of coordinate on the budget piece. I just track it as I go. But I know there is sort of a set amount of funds that are set aside for the year. And then if we were to exceed that for circuit riding, that's a discussion between staff. But the, you know, the economic development work, as well as the housing work that's upcoming, is all a separate contract. So when, when we need to talk about the survey and the master plan work, that's going to be in a separate pot that's been contracted.
I'm guessing you didn't have a little free time on your hands, but was there ever a situation where you said, well, you know, for the contract, I really got to cut it short this week from an hour standpoint?
Like where I.
Yeah, did you ever feel like?
I've done too many hours.
I've did too many hours, I'm going to stop, yeah.
I think the zoning work and transparency was probably more hours than maybe what we had budgeted for. Just sort of all of the work leading up to all of the proposed amendments. I think from the, just the pure development review side of things, you guys are, with, with how much Dee and I tag-team things, I think from a budget standpoint, what you guys have is, is probably fine moving forward. But thinking about sort of those workshop items that aren't underneath a separate contract, right? So it's really good for RPC staff to be able to continue working with you guys on proposed zoning amendments for 2024, but making sure that we have the funds budgeted for that can definitely be a little bit tricky. So that's the only gap I would identify.
Yeah, I think as, as the role of the chair, I think I want to make sure we have communication with town manager, if you found that whatever the allotted hours were and however that was agreed upon didn't meet what you thought you could have given to the board or what the board needed, then I think we would, I would have some discussion to try to ensure that we're at the right point.
Yep.
So.
Definitely.
So I guess it kind of, kind of depends, ebb and flowed, some, okay.
Yeah, certain years, certain times of the year are going to be busier, right? So sort of, as you guys know, that big push that we had at the end of 2022 was obviously a little bit heavier than, you know, when we're only having one or two applications per month. That's not as big of a lift, not as many hours per week, yeah.
Do we, do we have any applications teeing up that you know of?
Say that again?
Do we have any additional applications teeing up that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Doesn't mean five couldn't come in tomorrow.
Right. But we, I don't think we've seen any.
Said that, too, that we'd only, we'd only take what we can do, and there's not many asks. And then, you know, if too many is put on there and we don't get to the last two, then that's.
Last couple of years have been very busy.
Yeah, a little over, that's why, that's why we're saying the number.
There's only so much left here.
Well, you guys might get more.
In one year, if they wanted to. You just, you just got to keep down the numbers, you know, each hearing, to be fair to everybody, so.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. I mean, I guess the question is, I, I see that foundations in at Park, for the Parkland Medical Center, convenient MDs rocking and rolling. The Sweet Hill property, we know, has been resold for the, right, the third time. Hopefully that, I, you know, I'm sure we'll have the same oversight. They got to follow the application that we approved. And my hope is that it's a reputable developer and, you know, everything's on the up and up. Anything else that we know is going on around town, besides talking about an actual application?
Well, we know stores that have, have been switching here now.
Yeah.
The shop, the store is coming beautiful for the jewelry store for Nasser.
Yeah, that looks good.
That property looks a lot nicer now, doesn't it?
They've done a good job. They really have. They've done a good job on that one. I don't know how they even got it on that lot.
How, how to take the worst-looking piece of property on 125 and somehow make people even angrier about it? That is kind of interesting, at least some portion of the public.
I don't know what's going in the old place, but Birds Unlimited left and went over to where.
Shaw's, are they in the Shaw's?
Yeah, that used to be cleaners, so they went in that store.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
And then right next to it was something, I don't know what it was, but salt, salt palace or something has gone in.
Oh, yeah, it's like a, it's like a spa, like a.
It is. It's supposed to be healthy for your skin and, and your wellness. It's wellness, that is really what it is. And that went in there, so there's no vacancies now all through there, which is really good.
Sure.
So then you go around the corner, and I, isn't that one still blank? You remember the store that was toys? It was, you know, Built Toys or something, it was a special store.
Oh, yeah, 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 around, near the T-Mobile and the, and the.
It was right next to.
T-Mobile.
Then came, oh, yeah. Well, is that store full or not? I think it's still empty.
Might be.
That one little section right there.
I don't know.
Yeah, so that was that. But then you go over to Birds Unlimited now, and where they left out, what did they say they have in there?
Oh, a tire store or a stores unit?
No.
I just became, I became every member of public Facebook.
If you want to kill, you'd be gone right now.
I just became Plastow Community Facebook page by making that comment.
Yeah, everything I think is looking good, you know? I mean, we are filling it, you know, and, and getting different type of things in there, too, so. But when one leaves, they make sure something else goes in.
So is, is pace coming to?
Oh, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, I spoke with, and I apologize if her name, I don't have off the top of my head, but we spoke, it was a good conversation. She's been invited, and in fact, I have to email her, and I'll do that this evening, just to formally invite her and any other members that wish to come along. They've been invited to our workshop meeting for March 1st, I think it is. And then after that, I'm going to also email the, the contact from Greater Salem Chamber of Commerce. And formally invite them with the board's agreement and approval for the 4-1 meeting. We could potentially expedite that and invite them to the, the 4, excuse me, the 315 meeting, but I know there's already this application that was earlier, it was already been moved to that. We don't know if others will come up. So what's the, what's the deadline to know for that hearing?
Uh, I believe it's like right at the end of the month. So it would be, I think, the 25th of February.
Right, is the third now.
Yeah, it sounds, sounds about right.
Okay, so.
So you should know if you're going to have, by, that's what, next Wednesday? If you'll have another application?
Okay, and I'll reach out, I'll reach out to Dee, and maybe we can expedite that a little quicker, because, you know, when you talk a month later, boom, it's like.
Right.
The summer all of a sudden.
I'd like to see that earlier.
So, you know, I, I certainly, we want to get the input from the members of the local community. It's almost more of a collective, you know, the, the business is getting together and supporting each other and, and talking about how to, you know, and, and we want their input on, in terms of what the next steps are with regard to the economic development, you know, plan and things that we actually decide to do with it. And then I almost anticipate that a larger organization like Greater Salem Chamber of Commerce may actually be more involved in networking and promotion of the town and maybe some larger activities.
Giving us ideas.
Yeah, so if we work with.
Bringing people to us.
If we work with both organizations in some capacity, we'll get different things out of each, I think, at the end of the day.
Yeah, we, we might want to hear that because of, like, Bed Bath and Beyond.
Yeah, did you hear Bed Bath and Beyond? Now, that's a big one.
They're going out.
Tire store.
Just from a scheduling perspective as well.
Tire store in the US.
No, I think it should be storage.
Tom, when you reach out to these folks and for scheduling, just make sure you see CD on those emails so that she can, once it's confirmed, she can put it on the agenda.
Thank you, thank you for the reminder.
Because she, she has to post the agenda, you know, within X amount of days at that time, yeah.
It's going to be called. It's gonna be called Lugnet Oil and Tire. Get, get those 25% off coupons.
Bank of America, that's still nice.
Somebody on Facebook had asked who owns the property and I would say, well, Bank of America, but, you know, I don't know if they were leasing it. But, um, yeah, you're right. That's, that's, that's a big building.
That's a nice building.
Was that anything before the bank?
Nice location, good building.
Good doctor's office, just the way it works on the outside almost.
Then you're just poking the bear.
Is that, was Plastow Cooperative Bank, were they in there just before?
Yes, one was the trust and one was cooperative. Remember?
Yeah, they both used to be in the same building.
Yep, yep, yep. Now, I do remember that. You're right.
But then they moved to the, the other building.
And they moved out of the other place. Yeah, you're right.
Could the Bank of America be turned into some level of residential use, right? Because is that part where the overlay exists? Just curious.
Maybe upstairs and then have the business downstairs, that type of thing? Like we said, we were encouraging.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, anything is possible.
Right.
But in, inside, I don't know how the.
Yeah, I'd be curious what it looks like upstairs.
Would seem like it's big enough to have like.
Depend on that.
Yeah, it seemed like it's big enough to have three or four apartments.
Apartments upstairs and then maybe the smaller business downstairs.
I would depend on whether they have an elevator in, in there.
Oh, you can always put those in. Oh, my gosh, are elevators even for houses? Now, have you seen those things? The floor is like a circle that matches the floor and then it just goes up, goes up to your next floor and comes back down. Oh, my gosh.
Talking about the ones that go on the stairs? Those ones?
Oh, no, those are stairways, but this one is an actual elevator now, they're saying, for seniors. You know, you start at the bottom and it has a little plaque on it and it matches the floor wherever it stops. Amazing. That's just in a home. No, you're right. It would have to be an elevator probably for that.
Do we ever have discussions about the ZBA postings? Is, is it even appropriate to discuss?
They're just in here as sort of an FYI.
We get one?
Yeah. And just so you guys are aware, there were no applications for the January 26th meeting. I don't know if I would open a full discussion about a specific application, but you can certainly discuss that. It's on the agenda.
Okay.
I guess I do have one question maybe, and I don't know, maybe Tim, if you know this too, but when there's a process, okay, of somebody just coming into town, whether it be a business or be a home, if they want to come in and they're, they're looking for a site plan, okay? Shouldn't, if they want to have just a discussion, should that be offered to them first, right away? No matter who they go to, shouldn't it be offered if they think they need a discussion? That that should be first rather than sending them immediately to ZBA for variances when they haven't even, you know, don't have the feeling if their plan is even gonna pass or where it should go.
Yeah, there is that opportunity. They can come in with a conceptual plan. We've had, we've had a couple of those.
Yes, we, just recently, and that's why I was saying, is there a way that maybe that would be a suggestion to somebody who doesn't know the procedure and doesn't know what's going on, so they just go and do what they're told to do?
I, I think, I'm pretty sure that that, that would be offered to them.
Okay.
Because I think we, I think the staff tries to make, you know, be helpful to people.
Right, okay.
With, you know, no, obviously they can't offer any guarantees that if you do this, that, and the other thing, it's gonna be approved, but yeah, we, we've had a few of those.
I'm gonna bounce this to Sarah with a question. Do you, when applicants come in and sort of in the discussion process, do you say, like, I assume you say, hey, the way you have this drawn up, you're gonna need a variance if you want to do that. So you, you'd have to go to ZBA and then you might say, if you want to talk and get some feedback, you could do a pre application meeting with the planning board, you know, and non-binding. Is that those, is that sort of what staff does with applicants?
Yeah, yeah, essentially. You know, ultimately it's up to the applicant whether or not they want to do planning board or ZBA first. There's no, you know, mechanism that makes them, that they have to go to the ZBA first, right? It could be either or. It's very much, I think, a case by case basis and an application by application, right? So, you know, when an applicant comes to staff and sits down and says, this is what I'm looking at doing, you know, sometimes it's like, well, you know, there's a big underlying thing that they have to get a variance for and if that's not even, you know, if they're gonna go to the ZBA and it's a long shot, then it might be recommended that they try that first, right? Knowing that it's, that it could be a long shot or whatever it might be. But I think, you know, having, it's always better to have an applicant come to the planning board for conceptual or preliminary design review like we saw a couple of weeks ago. I think that that makes the process, especially for larger applications, you know, for smaller applications, maybe it's not as, as big as critical, right? But for a, a full site plan application, I think it is really, I, it makes the process so much smoother, both on the planning board side and the ZBA side if they have sort of that preliminary design review.
I was just hoping that they were given the choice. That's, that's all my point was, is that a process?
Yeah, it's ultimately up to them. Yeah.
That's a good point, you know, or it sort of made me think about how it seemed to be situations where we, we put in some zoning amendments, you know, beyond the, I'm just gonna die here, beyond the housekeeping ones, right? But, uh, no, I mean, especially the zoning amendments where we say, hey, we noticed the, the board doesn't, we think we need to do this. This is a major change, right? And then all of a sudden the ZBA just says, ah, no problem, go ahead and, you know, no problem. I, I think that coming out of this year, one of the things we should consider is how do we communicate to the other land use departments and boards or whatever, what we did and why, so that they know like, hey, the planning board changed the setbacks for this reason or the planning board changed the use, allowable use in this district for this reason. Otherwise they're just, don't understand, you know, because at the end of the day, if, if someone comes in with a variance request where the voters just said, hey, make this change, and then like a month later they, they say disregard it, that it's sort of not, there's one of the requirements in the ZBA decision is, is it against, is it in the public's interest or whatever, something along those lines, correct? So you'd say, yeah, it is in the public's best interest because they just voted to uphold this, this requirement. So I don't know what that would look like, how we get that information out to those.
I think there should be a meeting between the two boards every once in a while. There really should be.
Once a year even or, or.
Yep, I agree.
After the election, having a joint meeting.
At least the chairs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll use my C3 for an example.
Our chair getting together with their chair over coffee or at a public hearing?
And they're on the ZBA.
You can hold, we can hold a congruent public hearing, right?
Absolutely.
I don't know, when do they hold theirs? Once a month at the end of the month?
Yeah, I think it's the, is it the third? Tim probably knows.
Last, the last Thursday of the month.
I wonder if they would ever be okay with bumping to a first week in the next month. Week later, or does that not meet the requirements?
With us, we meet the first week?
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, who knows? I mean, you have to be, we, we have only done that once, a joint meeting with the ZBA. And it was, it was a long, a long time ago.
Was it because there was an application that both were involved in or was it just a discussion about what you guys were up to?
No, yeah, no, no, no. It was application specific. And I don't remember. Yeah, I don't remember exactly the, the details, but it was one of those cases where it looked like if the ZBA did one thing.
Okay.
Then it led the planning board down one road, which might not have been the, the best road and if, you know, there were a lot of, a lot of little nitty picky details that with a common meeting, you can iron out in 20 minutes.
Right.
As opposed to two months of going back and forth.
Sure.
But, I mean, you have to be very, you know, very, very careful. So the, in those cases, the, it's, it's, it's a planning board meeting. The planning board opens the meeting. Then the ZBA will open their meeting and the first part of ZBA meetings are I forgot their term and I'll say information when I can't think of the right, right term. Which is exactly the kind of thing that we do initially. So then it, so that discussion happens concurrently, both the board, both boards and the applicant and the public. All have a chance to chime in and discuss and whatever.
Right.
Then when that's gone as far as it can productively go, then the ZBA finishes their meeting, their deliberative session, as they call it. And that's when they decide on to grant the variance, grant the variance when conditioned or denying, or a special exception. And then the meeting comes back to the planning board jurisdiction. And now we know what the ZBA decision is because we just heard it 30 seconds ago. And so then the planning board continues. There might not, might be a large enough plan, so the planning board wouldn't necessarily approve it that night, but.
Right, exactly. Might not be the same night, but you've had the discussion.
Yeah, at least all. The problem with doing that all the time, well, I mean, you wouldn't want to do it for.
We wouldn't do it all the time. I just meant, I think occasionally they should know, if they have questions, ask us. What, what, what does this zoning, what did you do? And maybe if there was a big change, what is the change so that they know when a variance does come to them? I mean, they don't even know what we have done, even though it's been a lot. Sometimes they aren't up to date.
Yeah, wasn't there a question about C3? What's C3, right?
Exactly. And this was the chair. He says, what is this anyway? What's qualified C3?
So.
Okay.
Now, does the ZBA hold public hearings only if they have applications? If they don't, do they just not have a hearing? Is that how it goes? They don't have like workshop type things?
They don't have, I don't think they have regularly occurring workshops, but they do, they can have strict training sessions.
Okay.
And, you know, have off, meetings that are off public hearing. Absolutely.
All right, so coming out of the vote, I think that we can have a discussion about what the, the change, the amendments that were passed or not passed or whatever.
Right.
The results.
Discussion.
And then decide which ones actually have some sort of impact that we may want to then relay to other land use boards or departments or whatever, so they understand what and why. And then we can figure out if that's a letter, a, a meeting or something along those lines. So we'll, we'll discuss that after the vote.
I, I think we would be better, when we come down to discussing zoning, is send a letter to the ZBA inviting them to our meeting.
I agree.
Not, not as a joint meeting between the two boards, but if the individual members would, would like to attend or follow on TV, they, they at least know about it. So they would hear our discussion about what our intent was and, you know, what's that and the other.
Yep, no, it's a good idea. Very good idea.
So that would, that would work.
You're talking about after the vote? You're at the meeting after the vote?
No.
You're talking about when we're doing the public hearings?
Say, we're gonna talk about zoning on September 23rd.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, got it.
Then we'd write a letter to the ZBA saying, dear ZBA on September 23rd, we're gonna talk about zoning. You know, you'd be welcome to come and listen.
Sure. Heck, I mean, they could even participate and say, hey, you know what, we, we saw a lot of variances for this. I don't know if you guys want to address that, you know, or something like that, who knows? All right, any other, we have town elections coming up. We have two open positions coming. I believe we have three applicants for the two open positions.
Yep.
So two incumbents and a, and a, a third party, so see how that goes. Good luck.
Contested election.
Yeah, we don't get many of those anymore. We barely can fill the, the full seats. How about a board of selectmen, is that?
There's, Jay's got somebody for.
Two spots open, one's for three year. So there's two running for that spot.
Yep.
And then the one, unfortunately, the one left because of John's, a two-year term, there's three.
Oh, there's three? I thought just knew the two women.
There's three.
Three applicants?
Yeah.
Interesting, okay. Well, good. It's good for the town half choice.
No, I wasn't told three. I was told two and the names two.
There's three.
There is three. Okay.
All right, anything else anybody wants to bring up or discuss or?
She told me two.
Did we cover everything? Communications updates, F Y As and other business. All right, other than that, we have a, a March 1st meeting. I was gonna travel that week and I actually changed it to the next week, so.
Aren't you nice? That's great.
I'll do, try to do a better job of that.
I don't, I mean, it's not exactly the first.
Yeah, yeah, it's the first week of.
Seventh or seventh.
Uh, wait.
Actually.
It is the first.
Actually, it is the first. It does fall on the first.
The first, really?
There's only 28 days this month.
Oh, yeah, right. I'm sorry. Yeah, I was looking at February 15th, you know, going back a, a week rather than two. So, yeah, it does actually fall on the first.
Yeah, we don't have a month yet where we have that extra week. Is that in May?
No, but don't we have that in March?
Comes up a couple of times a year.
Yeah, it's May, I think.
With its five Wednesdays.
Yeah, so, all right. Going once, going twice, anything?
Do you want to discuss summer vacation too? And what days are we not gonna have a meeting?
Well, yeah, I hit the big 5-0 this year and, and somehow we got involved in two trips. Oh, we got the 50th, oh, and there, we gotta go to both. So I'll be away in June and sometime in June and sometime in October. Figure it out.
Welcome to the club.
Thank you.
Oh, we got all these turning 50.
I mean, we did a lot this year. We have a lot on the books ahead of us with, with all the housing and economic development. And.
I know.
But all those, I mean, that's enough.
We got a blurb going into the town report, right?
Yes, I submitted something to the town report.
Good.
I said you were absent though. I don't know what I was thinking.
And I believe you have two, two years with the housing grant. So the, the scope.
That was August too, isn't it? We started with that?
The, for the housing grant that we just got.
Yes.
That will start, so that will probably start like later this spring and then it'll run through, you know, two full years. So it won't be too much over, you know, I don't think you guys will be able to do. Yeah, so it'll be spread out a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, without going into crazy detail, let's think about what we need now that we've got a survey, right? And we've got some organizations that are gonna come and we're gonna talk, we're gonna have to talk to them about it. I don't know if Jen will. Do you, do you have a summary, like a one pager that kind of sums up our results?
She will have the report.
Okay.
Which I think is like three pages long.
Okay.
And then she, she'll be ready.
Yeah, I mean, how does the board feel about bringing Pace and Greater Salem in at the same time if they were, is there any reason why we would keep them separate? I mean, I, you know, because otherwise we're doubling our conversations, but I don't know if they conflict, they work together. I don't know if.
You could ask them how they feel about it.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, just ask and see if they want to come in together.
They're like rival gangs or something.
Yeah, I know. That's my turf.
They might want to hear the other.
I mean, I don't see how they would conflict because.
No, they aren't.
In, in a, in a sense, they're saying, well, this, they have resources that you don't have.
Right.
That would, we're all trying to do the same thing here, which is develop, you know, economically, so.
I think you were right though, if we could get the first one, Salem, in on the 15th, if that can be done before.
Well, at this point, I, I'll give them a shout tomorrow and see if they would have any interest in coming on the first because we've already got Pace coming or invited. So.
Okay.
If we're gonna present and we're gonna discuss, I mean, I don't know why we'd have to do it and then do it again a month later.
Okay.
Unless any.
Reminder that the board's homework for the first is still to go through the master plan that was finished in 2020 for sort of economic development language. So that the two areas that I flagged for you guys are the implementation plan as well as the future land use section.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter anymore. We got a substitute teacher coming.
Yeah, she's not, you know.
Well.
Nobody check up on us.
Yeah, so get the, get the TV, bring the TV in, the AV. And that's what, we've got to make the, the, the survey actionable. We've got to do something with it, right? We've got to, we put all that work in, what's, and, and what do you guys, you know, just off the top of your head, what do you envision us, you know, do you envision us writing warrant articles and, or zoning amendments that, that somehow achieve some goals? I mean, I guess we'll have to figure out exactly what we want to make actionable out of those results. And some of that might not, we might not figure that out until we hear from, you know, Pace and.
Well, we also know what we want new or something different in one section like C3. And C1 has also other needs.
Sure.
They could go in. And I think maybe that should be made a little more understandable, maybe?
Once the master plan language is reviewed, my recommendation, and I'll, and I'll talk to Jen about this, is that the board really take a look at permitted uses in the commercial districts.
Thank you.
And not just what's permitted and what's not permitted, but also how are those uses defined? Are they defined? Uh, that's sort of this, I think, the, the biggest step that the board should be taking. You know, I don't know that necessarily you're going to get into the weeds of like dimensional standards for the commercial districts, right? But just thinking like high level permitted uses, um, what are we allowing and what are we not allowing? And how is that shaping, you know, what's coming into town? And what we're setting the sta, you know, setting the stage for certain things to come into towns that we haven't maybe thought of and haven't listed out on our permitted uses.
I, I would think there's definitions for most things that are listed in permitted uses. I would not, um, give high marks maybe to the definitions. And that there, a lot of them I think are pretty fuzzy.
Sure.
So like accessory, um, units. Or accessory structures, I guess. So things like, there's a few of those that are, you know, there's a definition there, but it's probably could be tweaked to be a little more, specific.
I, I think retail needs to be.
That definitely needed to be done. And even though Cashel told me, you don't need to put it on there because it's not on there. It won't be built, so.
And looking at, you know, how and if we can parse out different types of retail use.
Sure.
I don't know, we'd have to, there's probably an RSA about how you can and can't specify that and Tim might know better than I do. But, you know, can you specify specific types of retail uses versus just having one blanket, you know, retail uses permitted? That's something that you could look at. So, so that's where I would focus your attention as to not getting overwhelmed, right? Where do we, where do we go in the zoning ordinance? There's lots of directions you can take it. I think really permitted uses and definitions of those permitted uses is going to be the step one. But first we need to make sure our master plan reflects what we heard in the survey, right? So that we can then have it trickle down into your zoning, right?
Yeah, one of the questions I'll be sure to ask Pace and, and Greater Salem Chamber of Commerce is, you know, what kind of data do they have regarding what types of businesses are seeking brick and mortar retail establishments and which ones are fleeing that? You know, and how do, how do we then decipher within those how to cater and, you know, customize our zone, whatever? Write our zoning to maybe bring in the ones that we find favorable and restrict ones that maybe we don't, so. Yeah, hopefully we can uncover that information. All right. Wonderful. Anything else? All right, with that, we will close the meeting at eight, uh, 42.
We should have had a party for you.